Six o'clock PM. Item two, roll call. All aldermen are present. Item three, pledge of allegiance and silent prayer in lieu of invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Item four, reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held on June 18th, 2024. What are your wishes? I get a motion by Veneman, second by Pluist, to approve the minutes. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I move to vote. I'll go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes, eight As to zero nays. Item, item five, consider for confirmation Mayor Zachar's appointments to various committees, commissions, and boards. We have appointed Board of Review Kevin Fagman at 710 Third Street South. Is appointed as an alternate member to, to a term expiring 51, 2029. Historic Preservation Commission, Pat Kazicki at 430 First Avenue is appointed as a regular member to replace Justin Pluist to a term expiring 21, 2026. And Helen Streepstra at 630 Third Street South Apartment, her number two, is appointed to an alternate member to replace Pat Kazicki to a term expiring 21, 2026. And Library Board, Connie O'Keefe at 721 Wisconsin Street is appointed as a regular member to replace Kim Henietis to a term expiring 71, 2027. Any questions or comments? What are your wishes?
Can we do all three at the same time? I'll move to approve this slate.
I have a motion by Veneman, second by Palmquist, to approve. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes, eight As, zero nays. Item six, update presentation, updated presentation by the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce regarding the Agreement of Services.
All right, hello, everyone. For those of you who don't know, my name is Stacy Keevey. I'm the president and CEO for the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce. Last year, we agreed upon an agreement of services for $25,000 between the City of Wisconsin Rapids and the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber. So I'm here to give an update on some of those objectives. You should also have the sheet in your packet as well. So two A was tracking downtown events for, you know, estimated business participants and estimated attendance for the public. So far, for Lunch by the River, and we're about halfway through, estimated number of businesses for the entire time would be 40. And for the entirety of tracking how many people come each week is almost impossible. But just for an example, June 6th was, which was probably the busiest day that we will have, we had over 600 people downtown for that day. Cranberry Blossom Vendor Fair unfortunately had to be canceled due to like 80 to 90% of the vendors canceling ahead of the storm that was coming in. And then morning of, it was just, we didn't want to risk it with the weather changing so fast. The Parade, which was June 23rd, we had 59 businesses that participated. And again, for estimated number of participants is very difficult, but I have to assume over 1,000. And then the rest of the events that are currently on here, we have not done yet. Another thing that we have done, which has been probably our top priority this year, is meeting with our member businesses to really learn more about them. And this isn't a short conversation. This is typically an hour to a two-hour conversation, really learning more about them, their business, what struggles they may be facing, and other questions involved. So I wanted, I pulled out three questions that I thought would be really beneficial for you all to hear. So top challenges facing businesses, and these are businesses in the City of Wisconsin Rapids. There were 47 responses for this out of the 67 businesses we have met with so far. 23% said inflation and supply chain issues. 18% said hiring and wage inflation. And 13% said getting the word out about products and services. Another question was, are there concerns with doing business in the City of Wisconsin Rapids? 47 responses. Out of those, 33% said a lack of, they feel like there's a lack of communication or support from the city. 21% said building permit and zoning restrictions. And 10% said downtown parking. And then the last question that I'll read is what businesses would like to see for community growth? Again, 47 responses. 28% said Wisconsin Rapids needs a new identity. 15% said more housing. 13% said more opportunities for the community. And 13% said talent and retaining those, that talent. I'll stop there. Do you have any questions so far for that topic?
Jake?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, I was going off of that, but. Go ahead, Jake.
Okay, I'll go ahead. So from your survey results, the, specifically the concerns with the city, nearly a third of the businesses said that a lack of communication support was a problem. And then 21% said building permit zoning restrictions. Can, can you give us specifics or, or some details from those conversations on what those people were saying?
So I would say for the lack of communication and support, I think a lot of it, from my understanding, would be perception. So I'll give an example. There was a lot of excitement that went on, which I know isn't city-related, but regarding the Tribune Building. And then nothing ever happened, right? It's like these things are, there's excitement that builds and then it just drops off. And so I think there's like, well, okay, you know, how can I be excited anymore if I don't think that this is ever going to happen? As well as feeling like, I think it's a lack of understanding as well. So for example, why isn't the city doing anything about the mill? Well, we know that it's not the city, right? It's privately owned, but more of an understanding and more communication with specifics on those types of things.
Thank you. And so were, did they specifically say anything when you talked to them in regards to lack of communication that they were trying to get a hold of any elected officials or people down at City Hall and they were unable to?
That, that I didn't hear.
So it's mostly about like what's going on in the city and keeping them up to date on that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then 21%, so nearly a fourth said they're having issues with building permit and zoning restrictions. Can you detail how those conversations went and what some of the issues are?
So I think, right, just the, the understanding about where to start with a business. And I know Kyle and I have talked quite a bit about that. And, you know, it, when you're dealing with, let's say, a, the shop co-building, right? There's very large businesses and they know how to do everything properly because they have an entire team to do, to do that. If you're talking about one person entrepreneur, they're not going to know those same things. So being able to find the information better, having checklists, which are now created. And then we also have linked those to our website too, with what are the proper steps? So getting the word out regarding that. And then I think communication in regards to how can we help versus just being shut down immediately?
Thank you. And I, I think all of us are interested in certainly how we can help. So if there's any, anything specific that comes out of that, that's an issue or, or things we can do to help keep us, keep us all on the loop. I know sometimes communication goes down one channel, but oftentimes if, if we all don't get it in an email directly, or it's not talked about at a meeting, people are left out and some don't know about it.
Jake pretty much covered the questions that I was going to ask. And no, I don't have any more comments. Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, sorry, Dean.
Um, I just want to say, yeah, one of the things we talked about is having an alder on the, on the chamber board. So we, I went today to the first, you have quarterly board meetings and it was very informative. And I learned a lot that I actually didn't know about. They're doing that, their meetings were conducted very well and there's a lot of progress going on and well attended. So I think it's a good idea that we have someone there, not me nor anyone else, but it's a good idea that we are in attending to get a good feel for it. So if there are questions about any of the alders, feel free to talk to me about it. Thanks.
Patrick?
Dean's a great addition.
I had a question on the one below that, the downtown parking. Was that specifically the lack of parking or did that have to do with the time limits imposed by the city on the parking?
Lack of parking. I've heard, you know, so with like Wood County employees, that's one thing I heard, especially with all the construction. I've heard, you know, they're parking in front of certain businesses and that makes it difficult for customers, like river block building and so on. I've heard that when the farmer's market is going on, there's a, there still is a lot of confusion where it's unsafe, kind of by that street, by like Bowers Floor Mart area, but essentially just, yeah, lack of, lack of parking downtown for customers. And when you have the work, during the workday, you have people trying to find parking as well as just customers, it's, it's difficult is what they said.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to two B, and what you have in the sheet is not the most updated information. We were working on this after I had sent it, but it was, you know, manage employee head count for the largest 10 employers. So I put on there who I thought were the largest 10 employers in the Southwood County area. And I'm currently working on this. I probably have about 90% done, but I'll share that when I come back because then it will be broken down, you know, largest and then so on. Track assistance provided to businesses to assist with retaining jobs. So I have so far met with 15 individuals for business consultations. This includes individuals interested in starting a business or expanding their business. On top of that, which I think is a point to make, the board and I are discussing ways that we can help businesses more with our revolving loan fund account. So that's going to be more of a probably end of the year conversation, but being able to support people with gap financing. So just stay tuned for that one. Also tracking meetings with state and regional economic development organization. Have had 45 meetings relating to economic development and engagement. These include meetings related to economic development, engagement, and workforce development. And then two D was to identify up-to-date resources for entrepreneurs, startup, expanding business on a website. So we did fully redesign our website, which was launched April 1. With that, we have an entire section on economic development. It includes, you know, starting up a business and a lot of different resources to do that, including checklist that Kyle and I, Kyle worked on that I've been able to link to our page as well. Funding resources, business plan template, all of that. So if you're interested, please go on our website and look. If there's anything we're missing, please let us know because we'd love to add that as well. And then also we worked with a UWSP student for their capstone project and created an economic development dashboard. So a lot of data that you get, it's all of Wood County or it's just the city. We don't have something for Southwood County, which is the area that we service. And so he was able to grab a whole bunch of raw data that we had and implement that into a visual dashboard where you can actually pull out by municipality. So again, it's a lot of information. So if you're interested, go on there, check it out. It's some really interesting information. And then lastly, holding workshops related to economic development, business growth, workforce. We have quarterly coffee with the chambers where it's specific to educational topics. So we had planning for economic development in central Wisconsin, featuring Sam Wessel. For May, we had selling to the government. Is there an opportunity for your business featuring the Wisconsin Procurement Institute? And then in August, we will have an economic development update featuring Kyle Kearns and the mayor. And then in November, we're going, going to speak about maximizing their chamber benefits. So that is all I have for an update right now. Is there any more questions? Or anything else you would like to see?
No questions right now. Thank you, Stacy. Appreciate your time. Look forward to continue to work together. Item seven, general discussion initiated by Mayor Zachar regarding possible personnel and organizational structure strategies to address short-term and long-term needs for fire and medical, emergency medical services in Wisconsin Rapids and surrounding communities. No formal action will be taken. So I just wanted to have a chance, since I got into office about three months ago is about when we started having the conversation between Chief Akas and I about personnel needs in, in the fire department, well, mainly in the EMS services. During that time, I took it, I guess what I needed at that time was to take some time to learn as much as I could about what was going on with the fire department, EMS services, our community, and the surrounding communities. I took some time at that time to spend about a week with the fire department, just understanding better what was going on there. Granted, you need way more than a week to really get inside and understand better what, you know, the ins and outs of what's going on. But I did get at least an understanding of the people that work there and, and the work they do and the amount of calls that come through and, and what it means when it's, it's a fire call versus an emergency medical call or a lot of non-emergency calls that come in and how, how those all play different roles. What it's like for a group of men and women to spend 48 hours up. You know, they're down, they're, they try to get some sleep, but really you work through 24 hours is a, it's a long space of time to be tired going into the next 24-hour period. But then in the end, they get the 96 hours off. That's something that's been implemented for a few years. Now, there's some upsides to it, which is recruitment and, and getting people to want to serve because they're really, the younger generation is what I've been told, because they really like the 96 off. But that 48 on, I think, in seeing it definitely takes a toll. And it's something to be talked about, you know, as we move forward to say, you know, is that the best way for those folks that are doing this difficult job to live through those two long days? One day is a lot, two days is, is a ton. And then to be able to come off of that, again, knowing the 96 is there waiting. We want to make sure that those folks are being taken care of to the best of our ability. But also that is that the best way to serve the community that we serve through our fire and our EMS services? That led to, you know, the big, the big question on the plate was what? We have 5,000 calls roughly coming in this year and it's only going to grow somewhat exponentially. We assume it'll drop off after the baby boom generation starts to reach its peak and, and come back down again. But in the meantime, we're facing this onslaught of calls every day. I think when I was there that first day, it was like 27 calls. It's a lot and you're constantly moving and, and, you know, anything can happen. And again, I give great credit to everybody that's in this, in the fire department for doing the job they do to keep everybody safe, as well as the entire city. But I guess at this time, we're talking about the fire department. So the 5,000 calls, so there's a couple of different ways that I kind of learned that, that we can look at that. I don't have the exact number, but as I've alluded to already, there, there's somewhere between, I'm just going to say 30 and 40% of the calls that aren't emergency calls. So what's happening is the generation, the older generations right now have, for whatever reason, and I don't know how to change the course of it, but they've, and I don't think, we're obviously not the only community faced with this, but we're, we're dealing with a group of people that decided that 911, the EMS and the ER was the best way to get their, their, their basic healthcare. My understanding is a lot of them see it as a, you know, it's an easy ride to, to the emergency room. They feel like they paid for it in their taxes already and it allows them to get into the, see a doctor much quicker. But that puts a heck of a burden on the system that we've built. And what we've built in our community is this amazing, you know, group of people that are trained to the highest level of firefighters and the highest level, level of paramedics. So we have the most highly trained people doing a lot of calls that they're way overqualified for and we don't need that kind of service in order to handle them. But the trick is, how do you handle them if, if you don't necessarily know what the level of service that is needed when the call is put in? So you, so that's the, the fear that goes into that. If you, if you send out a, a lesser, like, like we could have the opportunity to develop a EMT service where it would be basic life services. And you can, we wouldn't have to pay them as much and we'd be able to have a little bit more flexibility in who we send out and how we do that. And it would be less cost. But you run the risk then of if it is an emergency and you send the non-emergency services right away and something bad does happen, then you got to face the pushback of, you wouldn't have happened if we sent the, the more qualified group right away. So that's the part of the discussion that we have to have. So there's a few different ways of looking at that. The one I, I just talked about is to develop a, a basic life services EMT group that would work with the firemen and the paramedics, the more highly trained level. We also have another option on the table, which is we have a private organization, Universal Emergency Service, Universal Paramedics. They've been in the community for a long time. They have the ability, they have paramedics that are trained to paramedic level. They have the capability of growth. They have the people and services to grow. What they don't have right now is the ability to take on a whole lot of new calls. We do, do shared, I don't think that's what it's called, but mutual aid services where we can call them when needed, but it's a little tricky because if the calls come in rapid fire, then you gotta run, you know, you got some risk there where you gotta run as to who to make the call and make that call fast enough to be able to get them on it, especially if we want to keep as many people as we can for the fire truck. So that's what this always comes down to is, and I'll get to that in a minute, I guess, in a little bit deeper, but we're always looking at the fire truck because if we send out all the people in the ambulances and we don't have enough people for the fire trucks, then if we have a fire called in, we don't have the fire truck to be able to go. So that's the, that's the biggest risk that we run outside of, you know, sending a, a lower qualified paramedic to the, to the emergency when it's called in. So there are different factors that play into this. So we do have this ability to turn over, if we so choose as a city, we could turn over nursing home calls. And a lot of them have already been turned over to Universal. We could work with, and this is a little trickier, but we can have the option of working with dispatch. They do do a triage system where they rank the folks from A, or the calls that come in for A, B, C, D, and E level. But at the same time, the risk that they would run is if they go through their questions and again, something, it comes out as an A or B where it's not an emergency. So we don't send emergency troops and something happens, then we have to face that, answer those questions as to why we didn't send them right away. But if we did do that and we gave them the authority to do that and the backing and the liability backing to that, then we could lessen some of our call volume. So we could lessen some call volume with the nursing homes where a lot of those are lesser, less emergency calls. Sometimes it's picking people up off the floor, which we do have to get them off the floor as fast as possible. That can cause other problems if we don't. So there's two ways. And then to lighten our call load down the near future, we could actually let go of the contracts that we got over the last couple of years where at that time, we didn't need, we were told we weren't going to need more troops or more paramedics firemen. But since that time, we added four more firemen to that service. So we did need more. We brought us up to 12 tiers or 12 people at every level and, and every shift that's in there. So we're at 12. Now, the other side to that right now is we're at 12, but we were down four people that we just hired and we had two people that were out sick, long-term sick on FMLA. So that was, we're actually down six people. So we're running off 10 tiers instead of 12 tiers. Now we're working those back in, coming off of FMLA. And we got four more people hired that will be starting soon and working into the rotation. So once we get to the 12 full tiers, we'll know better how many people we have to actually run the fire department. As of right now, that's where we're going to be at. So now we're at 12 tiers. So how this plays into it when it comes to 12 tiers or 12 people? So every shift, they count on two out of the 12 people being on vacation. That's all year round. And then a third one just being out for some other reason. So then they have the minimum number of personnel on duty set at nine. So there's nine people on every shift right now. That's the minimum level they can be at. So when you have nine people, then you put three at the west side and nine at the east side. If you have three at the west side, you have two for an ambulance or three for a fire truck. But as soon as you send out the two and the ambulance, you no longer have the, at least two for the fire truck, which it shouldn't be just two, but that's kind of the risk we run right now with having three people on the west side. And then you have six people on the east side. So you have the ability to send out two ambulances or three ambulances, but if you send out three, you have no people left and you have to have the fire, the people left for the fires. So you really have the ability to send out two ambulances and one fire truck with two people in it. And that's where this pinch comes in because as soon as you send out the two ambulances, you only have two people left, that's when you're calling in more people. We're putting them on overtime in order to cover, to have more than two people go out on a fire truck. And that's what happens when, when we do send out two ambulances and we get to that point, that's the fear factor part of we have, we don't have any people left for the, for the fire trucks, especially if we send out up to three ambulances at one time. So the other way to look at this, and this is what Chief Akas and I have been talking about, is if we bring on more people, and, and it seems like we've talked about three, six, and nine. And if we put on three, we'd be at 13 tiers, 13 people per shift. But if we put on two more, that's 14 tiers we'd be at. So of 14 tiers, minus the two that are on vacation and minus the one that has gone for whatever reason that, that day, they just kind of factor that in, we'd be at 11. And if we're at 11 people, then you have four on the, on the west side and seven on the east side. If you have four on the west side, then you have the ability to send out two ambulances or one fire truck. Or one ambulance and one fire truck with only two people. So you have the ability to cover it, which, which frees up the ability and to put more apparatus, vehicles out on the street at any time. vehicles out on the street at any time. If you have seven on the east side, you can do two ambulances or up to three ambulances, depending on how many we're going to end up running. But you also have, if you have two ambulances out, you have a more safe, uh, ability to have a fire truck ready to go and leave it, uh, when they need them. I know it's a lot of information, those are the different options that we have at this point in time. I personally think, uh, I did do some research and met with some communities that have, um, went through the efforts, and it's a long-term effort to start a fire district, where you can actually have the broader conversation, and this would take relationship building with the, with the outlying communities to start talking about, we have the buildings, we have equipment, we have personnel. You know, if we all work together and share resources, what does the bigger picture look like in terms of a, a fire district and an EMS district that would kind of take the burden off of just Wisconsin Rapids and put it on the entire community as a whole? And, uh, but again, those are broader conversations that I did not start with the outside communities yet, um, because I kind of needed to get some kind of a direction from, uh, city council as to how they would like to proceed from here and be able to answer questions that I could answer, or if Chief Akis or Ben Gudrow has been a big part of my educational process in this, uh, to answer questions also.
Thank you. Chief Akis?
So just a couple of points of clarification that maybe you didn't get from whoever you talked to. But in the state of Wisconsin, there is no statute to allow for fire districts. Um, what you, with those, what you hear as fire districts are intergovernmental contracts.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a, a true fire district can set its levy, it's its own governing body. Um, if they, if they need to raise levy, that, that can be done through a, a true fire district if it's in statute.
Okay.
Intergovernmental agencies, if we enter into that, and let's say we decided as, as Wisconsin Rapids that, you know, we need a new fire truck, I'm just going to use that as an example. You have to get that agreement from every agency that signs into that, otherwise you're dead in the water with it. Um, so the State Chiefs Association is pushing hard at the legislative level to try to get, um, definition to districts in the statute, but as of now, that's not in there. Another point of clarification, you talked about, um, the possibility of United responding into the, the city. That can't happen by statute. We are two paramedic system by, by rule, by DHS rule, and in order to respond into the city, 911, you have to be a two-paramedic system, and they are not. So I just wanted a couple of points of clarification before we head down those paths of, of what's a path that I don't think is, is legitimate for you. If, if we wanted to, we could raise a big stink about them going to the, the nursing homes, but we don't. Because, you know what, it takes the load off of us, and it's helping them. But to have them as a 911 system coming into Wisconsin Rapids is, is against statute. So just a couple of points of clarification, um, through that whole thing. And we are more than happy to answer any other questions, so.
Thanks, Chief, appreciate it. Justin?
I just also wanted to make note that here in, in the city of Wisconsin Rapids, uh, the citizens are, are served by two stations, on the, one on the east side, one on the west side. And I, I know the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department prides itself in having response times under five minutes. So anybody that were, have a medical emergency, a fire, they call 911. Uh, they can be certain that, uh, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department apparatus, whether it's an ambulance or a fire truck, will respond within five minutes. Um, and that's something I think that our citizens in Wisconsin Rapids have, um, been, uh, have enjoyed and, and appreciate. Um, and it's made a difference, I know, in, in people's lives. Um, and I think what the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department is experiencing is the same that many departments across the state of Wisconsin are experiencing. They're being called to do more, uh, more calls, more responsibilities, more disciplines, uh, with less. So I think, um, what they're looking at, from my understanding, is additional staff, um, which was mentioned just now. And that is, that is a big commitment, and I, and I, um, feel like it's a big enough commitment that that decision may be best made by those that the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department serve, the community themselves, in the form of a referendum. I know many departments across the state have, have, uh, turned to referendums to give that choice to, if their citizens are willing to pay more for, um, to maintain the level of service and emergency services that they have, uh, that they expect.
Thank you. Anyone else? Patty?
So I'm, I know, looking at this at a very basic level, we have, we need more staff to respond to our calls, or we need less calls, and we're not going to fix the healthcare crisis. So, um, we either A, hire more staff, or figure out a way to decrease the calls. And I heard you talk about potentially developing a group of people who want to be on an ambulance, because our firefighters want to be firefighters. They don't want to be punished by sitting on an ambulance all day for 48 hours. And, um, I'm concerned on why we would develop this other set of people when we have the United Medical Group who we could work with. I mean, we talk a lot about developing our businesses, you said that's a long-term standing business in our community. They're residents of our area, we know they're going to be here, and they may not be able to respond to 911 emergency calls, but if we're considering developing this group of people who want to be on an ambulance, I think we should first consider how we can work with them, because that's what they want to do. That's what they've been doing for our communities.
Thank you. Patrick?
Okay, so I hesitate in speaking for everybody, but I think that I'm right here that nobody ever wants to be in the position where a loved one is in trouble and needing help and not able to get it because we don't have the staff for it. I don't ever want to see the, um, fire department fail. I think it's upon us to take care of fire and police and to be able to stand behind them as they do their job. So I don't know if there's any additional, I would like to explore more on this, but I do have questions about if we do add more personnel or put it on a referendum, like what the date that we would have to decide by, and that would be a question for Jennifer, I would think.
I don't have those dates in front of me, but Sue, do you, can you address that?
Um, I believe it would be August 27th is when, uh, a resolution for, um, the referendum would need to be given to the county in order to be placed on the ballot.
Yes, if we're trying to go to November.
For November, right, yeah, I guess, right for November.
I think it would be who was to explore these other possibilities before putting it on, on the ballot, if we do have some other ways of helping out the fire department. And, and, um, either, as Ms. Palmquist has said, Palmquist has said, um, it's either lessen their calls or to add more staff, so. Okay.
So this, this pinch point has been mentioned, or staffing. How many calls have we not been able to respond to because of this problem?
I think in the end, we've responded to every call that we've ever been called out for.
So every time, every time we've been paged, somebody has gone to them. Um, there's been times when we've had enough in their, uh, low acuity that they're, we call it putting it in the queue. We're going to be there, but it may be 10 or 15 minutes. That only comes after we try to get mutual aid to take that call besides. So we have mutual aid with ambulance services around us, United's one of them. Um, there's times when we've, we couldn't make it, offered, told them to send them, and they can't make it either. That's when they get, we call, put, put in the queue. We're still going to go there, and we, we triage that call, or the battalion chief that's on triages that call, and it's the lowest acuity person that's, that's, uh, going to be, have that time to wait, so. Does that explain?
So we haven't missed a call?
No.
Okay, thank you.
But
So you mentioned
This comes in, where this comes in isn't so much what calls we missed, it's the calls we're going on very much understaffed.
Okay. So how often do you have to put them in, queue them, or?
I don't know, we don't track that, it's, it's, it's not like every week or every day or anything like that.
Not every week or every day, okay. Yeah, I just ask those questions for those watching, and I'm sure that it's, the conversation sounds like, right now if you called 911, like, we wouldn't be able to show up, but that has not happened
That's not the case, no.
To date, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Patty?
I'd, I'd like to make one other point that was brought up about. We took on an area to the south, um, said we didn't have to have people, but yet we put four on. That wasn't how that happened. We took on the area to the south, and the agreement was we were going to put on that last one on the 11th tier. We then came to the council afterwards and through our presentation, showing the need for additions, not because of what was to the south, but was, what was happening over the whole entire area that we're doing. To this day still, that increase is higher in the city than it is outside. When we came to the council and asked for that, that one member of number 11, we said it would be around three to 340 calls. Last year, that, that area we took on, when we came to you and asked to take on that area, was 356 calls. So the increase in calls isn't coming from that area we took on. Well, has their calls increased? Yeah, proportionally for, for the populations that are there. But the largest amount of increase is still in Wisconsin Rapids. It comes to reason, right, it's the highest population of any of the municipalities that we serve. So the, the, when we come and ask for three last time, it was the rise in, in call volume that had happened over all of it, not just what happened down there. So I just want that separated, so that, again, the people that are listening out there, we didn't get four because of that area we took on. We got three extras because of the call, rise in call volume that had never been addressed as far as numbers over the last 30 or 40 years, so. And a point we tried to make to Mayor Zachary when we talked to him is, you know, we're chasing something that should have been addressed many, many years ago. It's been ignored for 30 or 40 years, and now it's starting to bite us in the butt. And it, it's going to, it's landing on your shoulders, and I apologize for that, but I can't, I can't change what happened in the past. Again, we're changing our, we're chasing our tail here because we're, we're, now we're getting to a point where we're going to crest 5,000 calls this year. Um, when I started in this department, I think we were running about 2,500 calls. So in 18 years, we're up to 5,000 calls. And again, it's, it's, it is, it's not all the baby boomers, it is a big portion of it. Um, it, but it's also the immediate satisfaction generation that I need to go now, and I don't care what it takes for me to get there. And the misuse of 911 with other reasons, like the people that can't wait for their doctor and things like that, so. Um, I just wanted to make some clarification points there, so that, you know, we're on the same page. And one last thing, I said it before, and I, I hear about, you know, working with United. We, you can work, you can work with whoever you want, but in statute, they cannot respond 911 into the city. We're a two-paramedic system, that's what, that's the way it's set up at state statute. Um, they're a one-paramedic system, so legally, uh, 911, they can't respond into the city. That's in statute, I just want, so that we don't go down that path, and we spend, you know, a month going down and find out we can't do that. So I'm just bringing up facts.
I think if, uh, my take on it in, in, in talking with them was just, uh, there's definitely been a, and, and this is not, again, this was long before you came along, and, and I know that there's relationships that have been happening over way longer than I've been here too, so. Um, but ultimately, they, they are kind of stuck in a position too of being able to grow and become more of a two-person system, but they're, they're kind of, you know, they're kind of stuck by, and I realize there's an upside and downside to this, but they're stuck by, um, market forces, because they make their money purely by the services they provide. They don't get the, the immediate boost of the, um, taxpayer dollars at that time. So I think my take on it is, they'd be willing to invest if they knew that we were going to allow them to grow in, in the community, in the area. I think they, they're willing to take on the investment needed to, to step up to that level that we need as a two-paramedic system. That was my understand, take on it, so, but I understand where you're coming from, thank you. Patty?
Yep, Todd, thanks. Um, so I, I really like that we're exploring all of these options, but I want to make sure that if we do not push something to a referendum in November, that that isn't going to cause additional strain. If, if a referendum happens, is, is it okay if we wait until spring? I know you've been doing this for a while, but everybody gets burnt out.
Well, I mean, spring is better than nothing, right? But we lost four people from like November through February-ish, and I do exit interviews with them, and every single one of them said the same thing. Um, we're getting beat up, um, there's no relief. Uh, I didn't, one of them was, I didn't sign on to pick people up off the floor and go to nursing homes. Now, you know, I think that's a little, a little hindsight, I mean, that's, that's part of the job, right? But, um, a, a lot of them are, you know, for constantly, for 24 hours, we're going, we're going constantly on, on a 24 or 48-hour swing, um, so they're getting burnt out. That's not the only reason a lot of them left, some were, were move-ups, but in the exit interviews, I, I get that with every single one, is, you know, we're constantly getting beat up here, so. I know that, I know that the mayor talked about, we talked about three, we talked about six, we talked about nine. I throw the nine number out there because if you look at, that does a lot of things. It gets us just about to NFPA 1710, which is the number of firefighters you need on scene for a two-story, single-family, no, no basement fire. Um, and that gets us to that point, but it also gets us some, some sustainability and longevity with, uh, personnel and, and proper numbers at, at the fire department. For where we project through data and statistical data, which, um, Ben has done a fantastic job on. Um, if you remember, two years ago, we, we ran at 4,746 calls. He, he told me, he says, we're going to drop next year, and I told him he was crazy because we were on a pattern, and we dropped going to like 45, 47. And his next one, he says, but we're going to climb again the next year, and that's just what we're doing. So, um, using, using the 40 or 50 years of data, you can, you can pretty much project where we're going to be. Um, so, do we need the people? Absolutely. Um, I got, when today, we might lose somebody else yet, so, um, you know, it's, it's not. And the thing is, people aren't getting back into this. I mean, I'm sure that United's problem also is personnel. You can't hire people, nobody wants to do the job anymore, you know? So you try to hang on to what you have, and, and I'll, I'll toot our own horn here. Just remember, you've got one of the best ambulance services, I would say the best ambulance service in the state sitting right here in this, this city. We are the first CAS accredited ambulance in the state. There's only two in the state right now, and there's only like 170 across the nation. Um, you gotta, you gotta be at a high standard to be able to be CAS accredited, and you have that set in your city right now. You're not going to get that with another ambulance service, um, around the area, so. Those are all things to consider. Um, our, our members train constantly, um, every single day they're out training in all the, the disciplines, water rescue, ice rescue, confined space rescue, extrication, fires, EMS, um, so keep that in consideration. It's one thing to try to save money and move backwards, and it's another thing to keep that level of care and the level of service that you have right now continuing, so. I'll leave it at that unless somebody's got a question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I, I don't disagree, we absolutely need at least nine more in order to cover the number of calls we have. The other alternative The other alternative would be to decrease the calls we have, either convince people to stop calling 911 when they need to go to the hospital, which we're not going to be able to do, or figure out how to decrease those number of calls. And I think that there's, there's an opportunity for us to discuss those things, but I don't want to push it off and drag it out so long that we lose more well-trained professional fire staff.
All right, thank you, Chief. Item eight, consider for adoption the actions of the Planning Commission at its meeting held on July 1st, 2024. Mr. Curran.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission met at 4:00 PM on July 1st in the council chambers, was also available on the city's Facebook page and livestreamed. A quorum of members was present. A list of other members in attendance is available in our office and the clerk's office. Meeting was called to order at 4:05 PM. Item one was the approval of the report from May 6th. There was a motion by Palmquist to approve the report from May 6th. There was a second by Daven, that motion carried 5-0. Item two was a request from the Hannah Center for Site Plan Review to construct a non-residential accessory building at 1320 Pepper Avenue. Staff provided a summary of the request recommending approval. There was a motion by Daven to approve the site plan review request, subject to four conditions outlined in the staff report. Second by Palmquist, that motion carried 5-0. Item three was a request from SN Rams Hotel LLC for an architectural review to install HVAC units at 451 East Grand Avenue, which falls within the downtown design overlay district. Staff provided a summary of the request recommending approval with two, I'm sorry, four conditions outlined in the staff report. There was a motion by Daven to approve the request, identifying a fifth condition in regards to louvers matching in color. There was a second by Tao, including that fifth condition. That motion carried 5-0. Item four was adjournment. There was a motion by Tao to adjourn the meeting, second by Daven. That motion carried 5-0, and the meeting was adjourned at 4:16 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. What are your wishes? I got a motion by Palm-
To approve.
Quest to approve the motion, or the minutes, and a second by Katna. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your votes. Motion passes, seven a's and one nay. Item nine, consider for adoption the action of the standing committees of the common council as follows. A finance and property committee meeting held on July 2nd, 2024. Jake?
The finance and property committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024, in the council chambers at City Hall. All members of the finance and property committee were present. Item one, call to order, Chairperson Katna called this meeting to order at 5:00 PM. Item two, review and approve a proposal from Snap-on Tools for a purchase of a ProLink Edge Master Kit V2 Scanner Tool. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Delaney, to approve a proposal from Snap-on Tools for the purchase of a ProLink Edge Master Kit V2 Scanner Tool in the amount of $13,824. Motion carried 3-0. Item three, consider for approval, projected 2027 ambulance purchase proposal, so we can be placed on the build list for delivery in 2027. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Katna, to approve a projected 2027 ambulance purchase proposal, so we can be placed on the build list for delivery in 2027 in an amount of Motion carried 3-0. Item four, consider for approval, a temporary retail Class B fermented malt beverages and temporary retail Class B wine license for Our Lady Queen of Heaven Parish, 750 10th Avenue South, for a parish picnic event to be held on Saturday, August 24th, and Sunday, August 25th, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM on both days. It was moved by Katna, seconded by Delaney, to approve a temporary retail Class B fermented malt beverage and temporary retail Class B wine license for Our Lady Queen of Heaven Parish, 750 10th Avenue South, for a parish picnic event to be held on Saturday, August 24th, and Sunday, August 25th, 2024, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM on both days. Motion carried 3-0. Item five, selection of a consultant for the intensive survey of the historical and cultural resources. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Katna, to approve the consultant proposal from UWM Archaeological Research Laboratory Center in an amount of $33,130 for the intensive survey of historical and cultural resources as presented. Motion carried 3-0. Item six, audit the bills. It was moved by Katna, seconded by Delaney, to approve check numbers 21909 to 22359 totaling Motion carried 3-0. Item seven, set next meeting date. The next regular meeting of the finance and property committee is scheduled for Tuesday, August 6th, 2024, at 5:00 PM. Item eight was adjournment. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Delaney, to adjourn. Motion carried 3-0, and the meeting adjourned at 5:31 PM. And with that, I'll submit these with the motion for approval.
All right, I got a motion by Katna to approve the minutes. I have a second by Palmquist. Any questions, concerns? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote. Motion passes, eight a's to zero nays. B, Public Works Committee meeting held on July 11th, 2024. Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor Zacker. The Public Works Committee met on Thursday, July 11th, 2024, in the council chambers. All members were present. We called the meeting to order at 5:00 PM. Item number two was review engineering and street department monthly activity report. The reports were reviewed. Recent wet weather and stormwater were discussed. It was requested that the informational guide to wet basements, causes, and solutions be posted on both the city's webpage and Facebook page. Item three, review 2023 sales of raw compost and consider a multi-year sales contract. There was a motion by Pensacola, seconded by Austin, to stay with the current vendor for a three-year contract through 2026. That motion carried. Item four, review the referral list. The referral list was reviewed. The next meeting date was set for August 8th at 5:00 PM, and we adjourned at 5:29 PM. And that concludes the report of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you. I got a motion by Delaney, and I have a second by Any questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote. Motion passes, zero a's, sorry, eight a's to zero nays. Item C, Human Resource Committee meeting held July 9th, 2024. Patrick?
The Wisconsin Rapids Human Resources Committee held a meeting on Tuesday, July 9th, 2024, at 4:00 PM in the first-floor conference room at City Hall. Alderpersons, Delaney, Pollock, and Pluus were present, Pluus being remote. Also present were Mayor Zacker, Mr. Kevin Fangman, Alderperson Dean Veneman, and Human Resources Manager, Mr. Ryan Hartman. Item one was called to order, the meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM. Item two was an HR update. Update provided, no action was taken. Item three was to discuss and consider for approval, making permanent the current trial period of City Hall hours of Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, and Friday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM through December 31st, 2025. This will replace the current trial period that was set to expire September 19th, 2024. There is a motion by Mr. Pluus, seconded by Delaney, to approve the extension of the trial period of the City Hall hours of Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, and Friday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM through December 31st, 2024, with no further consideration and action on the continuation of hours to be taken up at the, oh, I'm sorry, with further consideration and action on the continuation of hours to be taken up at the November 2024 Human Resources Committee and Common Council meetings. Motion carried 3 to 0. Item four was adjournment, motion by Delaney, seconded by Pluus, to adjourn. Motion carried 3-0, the meeting was adjourned at 4:30 PM.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Austin, seconded by Pollock. All right, I have a motion by Austin, and seconded by Pollock, to approve the minutes. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote.
Mine's down, so I vote aye. There, never mind.
Motion passes, eight a's to zero nays. D, Legislative Committee held on July 15th, 2024. Jake?
The Legislative Committee met on Monday, July 15th, 2024, at 5:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall. All members were present. Also present were Alderpersons, Palmquests, and Pensacola. Mayor Zacker, City Attorney Sue Schill, City Engineer Joe Eckstead, and Public Works Superintendent Paul Volart. Item one, call to order, Chairman Katna called this meeting to order at 5:00 PM. All members were present. Item two, discuss and consider revisions to Chapter 27 Parking. Motion by Katna, seconded by Austin, to approve the revisions to Chapter 27 Parking as presented with the July revision quotation, 48-hour parking limit. Motion carried 3-0. Item three, discuss and consider the elimination of certain city committees, commissions, and boards. No motion was offered, and no action was taken. Item four, discuss and consider making certain committees, commissions, and boards advisory to the common council. Motion by Katna, seconded by Austin, to individually review each committee, commission, and board, and their enabling ordinances at the next legislative meeting. Motion carried 2-1 with Austin voting in the negative. Item five, discuss and consider the ATV/UTV direct legislation petition referendum language. The committee discussed that the council's approval of the language was not statutorily necessary. No motion was offered, and no action was taken. Item six, set next meeting date. The next meeting date will be Monday, August 12th, at 5:00 PM. Item seven was adjournment, motion by Delaney, seconded by Austin, to adjourn. Motion carried 3-0. The meeting adjourned at 6:31 PM. And with that, I make a motion to submit these for approval.
I have a motion by Katna. Any other wishes? I got a second by Delaney. Ryan?
One correction, item four, I believe it was Delaney with the second, not me.
The minutes will be corrected in the records. Any other questions, concerns? Seeing none, go ahead and vote. Motion passes, eight a's to zero nays. Thank you. Item 10, reports of other committees, commissions, boards, and department reports will be put on file for you to read anytime. Item 11, referrals to committees. Jennifer?
I received a referral from Alderperson Katna to the Park and Recreation Commission
All right. Item 12, adjournment. What are your wishes? Motion by Veneman, seconded by Pluus. Adjournment passes, eight a's to zero nays. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.